Good evening. It is six o'clock, barely made it, on March twenty fifth, and I call this regularly scheduled Dunwoody City Council meeting to order unless there's an objection. Seeing no objection, this meeting is called to order. Councilman Henigan, can you lead us in the invocation and the pledge, please?
Please rise if you are able. At this meeting, help us to make decisions which keep us faithful to our mission and reflect our values. Give us strength to hold to our purpose, wisdom to guide us, and a keen perception to lead us, and above all, keep us charitable as we deliberate.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of British Commons. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comments? I don't have any cards, so, does that sound right? Nobody's put a card up here, okay? We'll have another public comment section at the end of the meeting if people would like to speak. Next is, it says Michael Berry, Jennifer. Is this you? What are we doing with the lights? Okay, wait one second, Jennifer. We're messing, okay. I didn't even notice. Okay. Someone put that on their pair list. All right, Jennifer, we are ready for you to introduce us to the Dunwoody High School Youth City Council.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We want to thank you all for your support of the Youth City Council at Dunwoody High School. It's a program, I think now, and it's fifth year, and it's just been a wonderful opportunity. I'm the staff liaison for the program. Mike Berry is the teacher sponsor at Dunwoody High School, unfortunately could not join us today because he has other obligations with the softball team. But he has been a wonderful supporter and driver of this program. He asks great questions, has great enthusiasm, and really gives these kids a great opportunity. And so we really want to thank Mr. Berry, if he's watching, or maybe watches it back later. And then I just want to kind of explain for those who are watching, or maybe in the room who don't know. Youth City Council meets at Dunwoody High School, usually about once a month in the morning. They have a guest speaker, a city leader or staff. And it's a great opportunity for them to learn more about what's happening with the city and how local elections work, how politics work. And this year was extra special because we had a chance to have the Youth City Council hosted. City Council meeting, the first off-site city council meeting since the founding of the, of the city. At the high school, the students ran it all, they got the word out, we had a great turnout. And so I'm really grateful for all of y'all for doing that, and also for city staff. And for the staff of the school and the district for making that happen. And now I want to introduce Valentina Klotra. She can say it with a much better accent, who is a senior for a few words.
Hi, thank you for having us, City Council, and thank you to our members for participating so much this year. Especially with our trip to the state cap- state Capitol. Which was an amazing opportunity to not only learn about our local election, but our state's government. So thank you to our members, and a special thank you to the mayor and all the city council members and everyone in the staff. So thank you.
And now we're gonna take a picture, if y'all can come on down, and we'll, if y'all will come over here. Thank you, everyone.
Does anyone have any questions or comments on the consent agenda?
Joe? So I, I'm, uh, just want to make sure, and I'm gonna ask just Eric Glenn as the city manager to clarify. The March twelfth and thirteenth, those are special call meeting minutes, and that's when we had a retreat, right, right there?
That's correct.
Right, and you'll read in the minutes, there's some takeaways and action items there. And I just wanted to make note, especially of a couple items. On the twelfth at the bottom, at the end, it talks about financial and options and so on. Your, your staff has been tasked, well, at the end of the, the thirteenth, the staff was tasked to come up with a list of action items and so on. That's gonna be presented in the, in the coming weeks to counsel the detail of all the specifics of the action items and, and, and so on.
Yeah, that's correct. And after the, after the retreat, or at the end of the retreat, staff and council came up with a long list of the deliverables from the retreat, and from that list, what we're gonna do, we're putting together a PowerPoint presentation to bring to the council in the future. That's kind of, kind of be our running total of all the deliverables for the council. And within that, we're also working with the staff, each staff, each department. And we had the department heads, for the most part, were all at the retreat. And they have their items to work on, and we're putting all that together to bring to the council, so we can work on it as one cohesive unit.
Right, thanks. And then just specific on the, on the budget perspective of capital, we didn't change any of the capital projects as far as what's listed in the 2024 budget. They could pull up the budget list, they can go back to the dependencies and see the capital projects, the capital expenditures, and those are still in flight. And council didn't make any modification to that. Is that a true statement, Eric?
So it, within the, that's, that's accurate. Within the website that we have, there's, we have a robust section within our website that shows all the capital improvements within the finance. And also within public works, any capital projects, parks and rec, it's all within our website. And for the public to display, we try to be very transparent with all that information, but yes, it's all still within that, that budget.
All right, great, thanks. No further questions, thank you.
Does anybody have any other questions or comments on the consent agenda? Okay.
Move to approve.
Move by Tom.
Second.
Second by Rob. Any further discussions? Seeing none, I call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously.
Mayor moving to business items, action items, we have a second read of MMSP twenty four dash oh two. Review and consideration of a major master sign plan for forty five fifty three North Schalford Road, Emory Healthcare, Allegra DeNora.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So this is the second read of the Emory Master Sign Plan. So at the meeting on March thirteenth, you all asked the applicant to come up with a condition restricting the hours of illumination for the wall sign that faces Parnashell Court. So staff has worked with the applicant to find an acceptable compromise. The potential condition is on the screen here, so that the lighting would be turned off at ten thirty PM and turned back on at five thirty AM. So that's there for you all, if you, if you so choose to adopt that. There's been no other changes to the application.
All right, so I presume, Ken, that this amendment, this proposed condition would have to be made as a form of an amendment to the approval? Is it, because it's not currently listed as a condition, correct? Right, okay. All right, anybody have any questions on this applicant? Comments? Okay. Your thing.
I move to approve the, the sign, what are we calling this? The master sign plan?
Second.
All right, somebody has to.
Move to amend.
Wait, I think, okay, open for discussion, okay. So wait, now we need to move to amend.
Move to amend the motion to add the proposed condition that the lighting for building wall sign number three facing Parnashell Court will be turned off at ten thirty and turned back on at five thirty AM.
Okay.
I'll second that.
That amendment was moved by Stacy, second by Rob, and we'll need to vote on the amendment first. So any discussion or questions on the amendment? Seeing none, I call the question, all in favor of this amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously. And now we're back to the original amended motion. And does anybody have any questions or discussion on this? Seeing none, I call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously, thank you.
Item number seven is approval to apply additional local maintenance and improvement grant funds to the twenty twenty four paving contract, Michael Smith.
Well, we have some good news, I think, that the state is giving out more money for the L-Meg program this year. You can see in the memo, it's a little over six hundred thousand. And what we're recommending is that we go ahead and apply that to the paving that we'd already planned this year. And then that should leave six hundred or so thousand surplus in paving, and before making a decision on that, we would recommend waiting until some of our, we have a large project that's gonna bid later this year with construction cost inflation. We're recommending kind of setting that money aside and not making the decision on how to spend it until we see how some of those costs come in. And then the council can decide where they want to put that money later.
Okay, does anybody have questions or comments for Michael? So this is six hundred thousand in addition to?
Yes.
Right, okay.
Yeah, we have, we got four hundred eighty-eight, I think, before, so over a million dollars in state funding this year.
Okay. Uh, John?
That's pretty much my question, but, so our budget committee met, and we had the L-Meg in there, that was the four hundred, this is an extra six hundred on top of it. We're deciding just to hold off to see where our needs are in the paving or construction aspect. Where are we in the sense of funding this year compared to last year's when it comes to percentages or money in the sense of? How much money have we been putting towards paving this year versus last year, the year before? We, our prices keep going up, and I just want to make sure that we're trying to figure out where we are.
Yeah, we're, we're allocated about three point eight million this year. Which is the, not including the new L-Meg, but the original L-Meg, plus our SPOLOST funds, plus some money we had left in the post. Funds, and we're using that money to pave the library and art center parking lot, so all total is about three point eight million.
So we're basically been level all years in the past, around that amount, right? Up and down a little bit.
Right.
I just want to make sure we're putting the money at the right place for the funding.
Yeah, I mean, we've generally, the last five or six years been, been between three and three point eight million.
Okay. So we're, we're there this year.
This is like the highest, though, right? I mean, we haven't hit four million, I don't think. In some years, we were as low as three, right? Two points up.
Yeah, so the lowest, so we went back this afternoon to twenty eighteen, and the lowest was two point nine million.
Right.
The highest was three point eight.
Right.
Right, I just, I hear complaints or comments that we're not putting enough towards paving, I wanted to make sure that we are. We are putting enough towards paving, and we're on track to finish out our twenty-year plan within the twenty years that we've allocated for all streets, correct?
We are on track for that, and, and, you know, once we see where some of these other costs comes in, come in, that the council could decide to take the surplus and use it for more paving, or put it towards another project.
And you do have alternate streets available, if so desired by council, to keep paving and to put an extra four or five streets, or whatever it was on there.
Yes, we could pull some streets from the future years, pull them up to this year.
Thank you, no other questions?
Uh, Joe?
I think you know where I stand on this, as a citizen advocate and so on, and I've seen other councils provide surplus funds and provide additional fees for paving. And I appreciate that, I appreciate that at least you're leaving this in reserve, and you're allowing council to sit back and have a conversation what to do with that. I, I would prefer looking at that for street safety, for traffic calming, to make it safe so that child can walk across the road, and people will stop at crosswalks. That it will change people's lives on a day-to-day basis and improve safety in multimodal fashions here. Versus, okay, we're just gonna continue to smooth and pave our asphalt, which we already do, and, and we know that the SPOLOST is a sales tax. It's subsidizing our roads, and then we get to choose what we want to do with that SPOLOST. And we have a great capital improvement program already, and we have funds allocated for budgets, and I, I would, I would consider, when we did do that conversation, of looking at our, our CIP again, and pretend, I know we did a budget adjustment just a, a month or two ago, with some surplus SPOLOST, and you reallocated stuff with, with Richard. So I'd like to have that, I'd like to have a really detailed conversation when you do come down to this, of, of, of what we could do, A, for current SPOLOST forecasted projects and CIP. Could we relocate and acquire right away sooner, you know, or look at utility relocation, how can we speed up these projects that are already in the pipe that the citizens have been paying for? So that's my, my thoughts, thanks.
Thank you, Michael, this was really good news. Does anybody have any other questions?
Move to approve.
Move by Tom.
Second.
Second by John. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There's actually not a name next to this agenda item. Yes, I figured, somebody was here.
The next item is approval of block safety two-year contract for LPR surveillance cameras and gunshot detection in the PCID area.
Good evening. As you all may already know, the city of Dunwoody and the Dunwoody Police Department's invested over the past five years quite a bit in our technology. Particularly LPRs, live view cameras and gunshot detection. With our partnership with PCID, they have agreed and offered to finance one hundred and seventy-three thousand three hundred and fifty dollars to fund that area for additional LPR gunshot detection, covering all PCID and live view cameras. It's a two-year contract, fully funded by PCID. We have no obligation after those two years. We plan to meet with them at that two years and look at the success of the project, and see if we'll move forward further.
Hey, it's pretty straightforward. Anybody have questions? Stacy?
Mine's more of a financial question, actually. Does the invoice just go straight to the PCID, or do we pay it, and then it comes into the PCID? Like, how does it affect our actual books?
We will actually invoice PCID. They will cut the check for a hundred and thirty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars to us. Because they would prefer to partner with the city of Dunwoody than rather partner with private companies.
Okay, I just kind of wondered how the, what the money trail was gonna look like, and I just want to take this opportunity to say thank you to the PCID for funding it. It's a, it's a benefit for all.
And, oh, go ahead, Catherine.
Do you have ideas now on placement, and my particular question is the mall, have they agreed to host any?
Yes, ma'am, the majority of these will be put on, not private property, for, except for our gunshot detection, which will require being on private property. The mall is currently under contract with Flock LPRs, I believe it is seventeen to eighteen to outfit their entire property in and out, which will be a great benefit to our city. We are leaving it up to those private businesses to fund, and we support them in any way, any way we can. But this will cover our thoroughfares, this will get the ins and outs of Dunwoody, allow us to see what's coming in, what's going out, and what may be entering their parking lot, or covering it with live view camera and gunshot detection.
Rob?
I was gonna echo what Stacy said to thank the PCID for this, I'm sure you're well aware, the perimeter areas where the majority of the crime in the city happens. And anything we can do to make that area safer for our citizens and our visitors, I think is great, and I'm glad that PCID is coming and helping us out.
Uh, Tom?
Uh, yeah, I'll just echo that, you know, these are proven value to the city, especially the police department and public safety. I hope that perimeter recognizes the value, and this is something that they not only continue, but will see value in perhaps expanding in the future. I have one question. The Condor cameras have the, the ability for live monitoring, is there, is there a plan to have those monitored live, or is that just, in, in a case of an event, that those could be utilized in that capacity?
Great question, and there is a plan to start monitoring through the real-time crime center that council did afford us. We are setting up a strategic plan to make sure we get that covered by certain means throughout our most problematic areas, or our highest crime times throughout the week. In turn, Condors, as opposed to your standard live view PTZ camera, have AI built into them. So similar to how our LPRs work, a Condor will notify the officers working the road if an incident's occurred. If a large group enters a, an area, say, or the Condors that are currently in the park, if two hundred people entered the skate park simultaneously, and that is not average for that camera to view, we will be notified. Gunshot detection, glass break, numerous things that they're building upon that to make those a smart camera, so that we don't have to sit somebody in front of it at all times. They can get alerted while working the road, just like our LPRs. That's why Condor was our choice in that camp.
Great news, thank you.
Um, you'll, I know we said at the end of two years, but we'll be doing intermediate assessments, correct?
Absolutely, and we'll be reporting that to PCID also, to get their continued investment.
Right, because this is out of their normal scope of, this is like a first for this CID.
Yes, ma'am.
And so we want to make sure that they see the value in case we find that there's more need. And you mentioned that perimeter is under the mall, perimeter mall, because the whole area is perimeter, but perimeter mall is under contract. I presume that means they're putting them on their property at their expense, the flock cameras.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, and then they'll, we hope they'll connect up with our network, or they will.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. All right, I believe this is an action item, it is an action item.
Go through.
Second, move by John, second by Stacy, I think I heard first, any, maybe my left ear's a little better. Maybe any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, I call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I hear none. Thank you, that passes unanimously, thank you.
The next item of business is let me catch up, approval of a contract with Sunbelt to install pedestrian hybrid beacons up from River Center West and North Peachtree Road, Michael Smith.
This project was discussed at the last council meeting, and y'all approved the, the purchase of the poles directly from the manufacturer. Since then, the bids have been open for the actual construction, and Sun, Sunbelt was the, Sunbelt Traffic was the low bidder. The breakdown of the costs and funding sources are in the, in the memo on the Primmer Center West project. The CID, we're expecting the CID is going to match the city funds fifty-fifty, they'll, their board will be meeting Wednesday to, to discuss that. So both projects are within the amount allocated, and we're reckoning, recommending approval of Sunbelt as the lower bid contractor.
Move to approve.
Move by Joe.
Second.
Second by Tom, now questions and discussion, anybody? Tom?
Um, yeah, thank you. First off, before I get into my question, because it's more of a process question, I, I'm excited about this. These are important pedestrian safety enhancements in two important areas in front of a school, and then a major retail office crossing area, so I think these are great additions to the, to the safety of the city. My question's more procedural, so with, with, with the bid, because I looked at the bid tabulation page, and I just had a couple questions. Have we used both of these contractors before, or?
Uh, we've used Sunbelt before, and they're actually our signal maintenance contractor to do regular maintenance. We have not worked with the other firm before.
Okay, and, and basically, in this bid process, the low bid wins, right? There's no evaluation involved, or?
Yes, it's the lowest, I mean, there, contractors can be disqualified, but the bar is pretty low to, to be qualified, and so then it's low bid.
And my, my reason for asking is, when I was looking through this, two things jumped out at me, in the bid tabulations. And they're right at the, actually near the beginning, was the, the traffic control. So basically, the, the prices came in pretty close, but there were two really, really large gaps in the bid tabulation. So the traffic control, and just to give an example, Chestnut, Sunbelt bid seventy-eight hundred, and OHM, I'll just abbreviate for that, bid thirty-five thousand. So there was a difference of twenty-seven thousand on that one project, and then on Primmer Center West, ninety-six hundred, thirty-seven thousand five hundred. So those two projects, and just in traffic control, there was a fifty-five thousand dollar difference. We've had issues with public works projects before, where traffic control wasn't up to the standard that we would want, or that our residents demand.
Right.
Um, I want to make sure that we're not, that we're getting the proper traffic control here, and then we didn't get a low-ball bid. Because that is a, a major discrepancy in, in price, and I don't know if it was, again, I know the bidding process is a, a unique animal, and people might put more into one area than another. But that's a, a big discrepancy, and I want to make sure that we're getting the same quality of service. Is, is how specific is our RFP for that particular element of it?
Well, as far as traffic control, they have to follow the, the standards. Their standards, both from the state and national, as far as traffic control. Having worked with Sunbelt before, I'm confident that they will abide by those. You know, like you said, sometimes they, the way contractors put their, spread their costs among different items, you know, they may have chosen, one contractor may choo- choose to put more in the traffic control line item, but it doesn't necessarily mean that one is gonna do a lot less traffic control than the other, so. I mean, we could, we will have that discussion with Sunbelt, but they've worked enough in the city that I think they know what the expectations are and what the requirements are.
Yeah, because I mean, that, that, that kind of jumped out to me, and I want to make sure that we're getting the, the level of traffic control that, that we expect. The other one that just jumped out, and I'll just throw it, was the, was the grading, and again, that might be one of those areas, or maybe the, you know, the silt fence was put in an area different, or something like that. But the difference on the grading was sixty thousand dollars on just these two projects, so those two, so traffic control and grading was a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars difference between the two. And on a four hundred thousand dollar, that's like twenty-five percent of the total cost in just those two areas. And I, when I see something that wide, I just, I, you know, the spidey senses start tingling, like, is, is, is the low bid giving us everything that we demand? Or did they low bid it, and then we're gonna, I know, I know there's a contingency and all that, and it's a contract, but I just want to make sure we're getting the, the, both the quality and level of service that we're expecting.
Yeah, the, the grading complete is usually one where you see some wide disparities, because it's kind of a catch-all, because it, because it's lump sum, and it, I mean, that tends to be one where contractors throw costs.
All the extras, yeah.
So.
Okay, yeah, that's what I figured with the grading, but the, the traffic control was the one that had me most concerned, just to making sure that we're doing that part of it right.
Yeah.
Right, and the difference between the two is not that great, the, the bids are.
Yeah, the difference was very little, and a hundred and ten thousand, hundred fifteen thousand, but those two just jumped out at me as bizarre.
There's only twenty-five thousand. Is it pretty much the norm to only get two bids these days, or is this really specialized work?
I think it's more that this is specialized work. There, there's maybe, I mean, five or six contractors in the metro area that I can think of that would do this type of work. So it's a, it's a smaller pool than like a general contract.
Gotcha. Anybody, John?
Yeah, on behalf of the parents at Chestnut Elementary, I want to say thank you. I had the pleasure of meeting with the Parent Advisory Council last week to talk about this project. I also spent a couple hours watching traffic flow in the afternoon and morning. They have some challenges. North Peachtree Road, rush hour, a majority of their students actually live on the other side of North Peachtree, have a large segment of them. You have lots of crossers, you have three lanes of traffic, you have two traffic lanes in the carpool lane. There are people pulling illegal U-turns, there are drop-offs where they shouldn't be, there is a lot of lack of control of the students, and there are some safety concerns that the Parent Advisory Council has. Looking at the drawings, I initially thought that you were closing the carpool lane just at the crosswalk, where it would shorten the distance for crossing, but I guess I understand that that's just gonna be paint right now. And that, if it's a problem in the future, or a solution in the future, we might be able to concrete that in, or shorten the crossing, and move the carpool lane back. But again, those discussions are yet to move forward, let's see how this goes. But the Chestnut community, as a thirteen-year Chestnut parent, and as a father whose son was very close to being hit in that very crosswalk. This is an important project for all residents or all students of Chestnut Elementary and their parents, so thank you.
All right, this is an action item, unless there's more.
Move to approve.
Move by, uh, we had a motion, oh, sorry, that was a while ago. Any further discussion or comments? Seeing none, I call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, thank you, Michael. All right, next up is Nicole and Ginger. I guess they're both on the item. And these are discussion items. And these are discussion items.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, this item was discussed with you briefly at the council retreat, has to do with technology staffing. And we have reviewed the technology contract and we are at this time making a recommendation to convert three positions, contracted positions to city positions. Um, specifically those are systems engineer, systems administrator and support specialist. We see, um, benefit to the city in terms of business continuity, succession planning, retention. Um, there's also cost savings with this conversion of about sixty nine thousand dollars in our projection. Um, at the same time, we're also recommending creating a new position in the technology department. That would be another systems administrator. Um, reason being for that, the, the police department is growing in size, growing in its use of technology. Needs to be operational twenty four seven. And we see need for a dedicated, um, technology resource for the police department. So that second systems administrator would be dedicated solely to the PD. Um, the cost for that position is projected to be about a hundred and ten thousand. So if you approve of both the conversion and the new position being added, it nets the city costs about forty one thousand. Um, it would be funded through the general fund. Budget amendment would be forthcoming. And in your packet, you, um, have the proposed compensation chart that would show you where those positions would be slotted as well as job descriptions for each of the three positions.
Thank you. Uh, questions? Tom?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Nicole. Uh, before I get started, just, I want to say in general, I, I think this is a good idea. We all know the importance of the IT uh, and, and getting them in-house, I think is a benefit to the city. Uh, what, what I just want to make sure is that we understand the total cost of this. Um, so, and we have three agenda items that are somewhat related to each other. And so a couple of things are later on, so I don't want to get ahead of myself and ask questions about future agenda items. Uh, but, so just, I'll put a placeholder there. Um, but the next item we're going to talk about is, is the, uh, the compensation, uh, grid. The cost that we're talking about now is based on today's, right? Because I, I compared the, the grid and, and the new positions don't appear on the proposed and that's because they don't exist yet until we approve them. So I understand the reason why, but it looks like the, um, the expense that we're looking, comparing it to would be, uh, today's, uh, compensation grid, not what we will be voting on in a few minutes for the, for the next one. And so that, the, I, I would just, again, I think those expenses would be, would be slightly higher. I mean, not significantly, but I was just.
Yes, Richard's saying yes.
So, so, so again, like the savings that we're talking about, uh, of course, we're adding a new position, so, but forty thousand, but it'll, it'll be less than that.
Once we do the increase, yes.
Yeah, okay. I just, I just wanted to make sure that I was understanding how that all worked. The other thing is, is I know one of the reasons that IT was one of the last departments we brought in-house because there were other things that went along with our contract. Um, oh, there you go. I was looking for Ginger, I didn't see her. You're hiding behind a pole there. Um, and again, I know, I know again, we have an issue, we're talking about later about the networking. Um, and are there any other, so I won't discuss that yet, but are there any other uh, elements to our current contract that we're going to have to compensate for as far, software, hardware, um, services, uh, that we were going to have to consider adding as a result of bringing those in-house that we're losing as a result of our contract?
So not losing, but we do currently have an RFP posted that ends tomorrow for backup, um, vendor. And that's because of the same conversion that we'll talk about with the networking is just because it was no longer included when we moved the director and manager positions in-house, those two pieces, the networking and the backups were no longer included specifically in that contract. So we do have an RFP currently posted for the same thing for the backup, um, managed service provider.
But no additional, there's no other, other things that we're going to have to compensate for and add, bring in house or?
The security team is still with, you know, the current vendor, it's going to stay, we're not, I mean, that's not up for discussion, that's in the contract right now, specifically as it is. So that's not up for discussion. And we have, um, the only other piece that's in that contract right now is the GIS department, the GIS team, and we're not, you know, that's, that's not, we're, right now, we're talking about the support, the IT support piece.
Yeah, and obviously, you know, we were actually talking about it earlier with the, with the youth city council about the importance of the IT with everything that's going on in the world. And obviously, uh, your biggest customer in-house is the police department and pub, how important public safety is as a part of this. Um, were there any? Um, I actually, that's part, I'll wait that because I was part of the networking thing. I'm getting ahead of myself. I'm sorry. I, I think that's it for now. So, uh, I just wanted to, uh, I just wanted to make sure that when we're considering the cost that we understood the tot- totality of that cost, um, and that there weren't any additional things that we're going to have to plan for that weren't perhaps a part of this that, uh, but, but our, our, our level of service at worst will be, remain the same. And with the addition of a, an additional staff member would increase. But again, I know the workload's increasing as well.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Eric?
Yes, uh, Mayor, thank you. Couple of things I wanted to say on this, um, on this contract and I've worked closely with Ginger and Nicole on this. Also Gary Nichols with Inner Dev is here with us tonight, just, you know, they've done a great job with, you know, servicing the city all the years since the inception. But what I wanted, as y'all know, part of what the cities are looking at over time is bringing more positions in-house as we, um, as we mature. And part of the, is, once we establish a, a great team within the city, that's when we bring it to y'all to ask, hey, do we want to bring certain people on board, certain positions need to be brought in-house when it makes sense? You know, the city has run a good trial program at that point with a certain employee, so we might want to bring them in-house. Uh, Mr. Lambert, just to answer your question, there may be in the future, other areas that may come in. Part of what occurs to, for the city is an employee may say, hey, I'm coming, I'm, I'm gonna leave, I'm leaving the vendor. You know? And so that creates an opportunity for us to look at. We've got a lot of time and effort also in that, in that individual, even though it's through a contract. We've, but we've trained them, they understand our systems. So that's when we bring it to y'all. So I don't want to fly under any flag saying there's not anything else that's going to come forward in the future on any contract. That could very well be the case as the landscape changes. Part of what occurs in the contracts is this, is it becomes an uneasiness with employees every time a cycle nears its end. And you know, these cycles have a little bit more than a year left on them. And so what happens is we don't want to lose the talent that we have. So the employees may come to us and say, hey, we'd like to be brought in-house. Or we say, hey, that makes a good fit. And over time, as, as I mentioned earlier, as we've matured, that makes sense. And when it makes financial sense, we want to look at that. So for this here, we felt like we're getting a a good value for the folks. And I just want to let people know that we're very happy with our contractors and what they've done with the city over the years, but it's just as we mature, we have to change like any other government and, uh, continue to change with the times.
John?
Uh, thank you, Eric, for that ex- ex- explanation. Um, the question I have really is about bench strength. One of the reasons that we contract is that when we have an issue, we have an entire company with bench strength and thirty, forty other people with expertise far outside our own employees. What is the downside of converting these employees? Where is that bench strength going to come from? Will we have to then contract special for those types of services?
So we already do have maintenance agreements with like Dell and, um, the different companies, Microsoft, things like that, so that we can escalate and reach out to them when we need assistance with things that are beyond our level. And we've also made sure that our team is pretty you know, pretty good with the escalation piece. For the most part, we're able to handle a lot of it in-house anyway.
We had a security risk maybe at some point and we had to look at that specialty and bring that people in or, you know, have that looked at. So that would be the exact same thing in the future, correct?
We are maintaining the security piece of this contract. Absolutely. It's still in place. We still have, InterDev is still the security provider. Absolutely.
So long story short, for an extra thirty, forty thousand dollars, we're getting better service. Term, and we are making sure the employees are going to be with us for an extended amount of time and not be afraid of the contract change that's coming in the near future. All right. Thank you. I think I understand everything.
Um, anybody else? Um, I have a quick question. Which is really for Richard Plateau, if he's back there. And, um, maybe, John, I don't know who this question is for Eric, so it's really for you. If this position is strictly for police, should it fi- find its way into the police budget at some point?
Well, what we, what we do is we centralize the way we do all of our IT. And that's an excellent question because what we used to do is we did have it in each individual department. There was an IT component within each budget and
Okay.
And what we've done is we converted that all to IT in that budget so we can keep up with the equipment better. And, um, as, and here again, as things that keep, it's the, we're there, as we mature though, it becomes a more solid way to budget that.
So, um,
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Additionally, to that, to that point is also to be able to still cross train. So we're still going to have a team that knows how to manage both the city and the PD. And it'll also help with after hours escalation and things like that.
Okay. Thank you. Is everyone okay with this for consent? Consent. Thank you. Uh, Nicole, you're back. To discuss the amendment of position allocation and compensation chart and market adjustment for city employees.
Yes.
Y'all move fast on that retreat stuff.
Um, we had been looking at this already a little bit. So you heard about this at the retreat too. And we are making a recommendation for mid-year market adjustment paying increase. Um, we've looked at fiscal, fiscal indicators, we have surveyed some of our nearby and, um, competing, uh, cities to see what they're doing with pay increases this year. And what we've established is that to remain, uh, to retain a competitive position, we're recommending a four and a quarter percent increase for all city positions. And pay range increase also at four and a quarter percent so that we don't create any compression issues, um, that we just undid last year. So, um, the, the, um, proposed chart is in your packet for this also. We would propose doing this on May thirtieth, which is the start of a pay period, which will make it easier for finance the process. Um, the cost for the remainder of the year would be about two hundred and eighty thousand. Or the cost for a full year would be four hundred and eighty thousand. And this would also be coming from general fund.
Okay. Questions? Anybody? John?
Yeah, I believe this is for Richard. Um, the budget committee at one point were looking at raises and I know we were trying to figure out how to, you know, make a balanced budget and we decided to slow down the raise proposal until we knew the revenue projections for mid-year, once the real estate valuations came in. How are we doing and are we able to cover these raises?
Sure. So, uh, twenty twenty-three, as you may recall, was a better year than we anticipated from a revenue perspective. So it, in a, uh, at a council meeting, either probably in April, one of the two in April, uh, bringing forth a budget amendment that's going to increase revenue based on how twenty twenty-three, uh, finished. And included in that will be, uh, adjustments to fund the raise for this year.
All right. So we have the money to cover the proposed raise.
Correct.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. No other questions?
Um, I just want to make the point, Nicole, could you estimate off the top of your head the percentage of our city employees that are employed in the police department? It's a pretty high percentage, right?
It is a high percentage.
Right.
Um, I don't know the exact percentage off the top of my head, but yes, it's
Right.
It's the majority of our employees.
So these actions are driven by what our neighbors are doing. First of all, that's the right thing to do, right? When you reflect back, quite frankly, five years ago to what police salaries were and where we are now, it's a tremendous change. It should have probably happened a long time ago, not just with us, but with everybody. Um, but I want to make the point that we aren't a huge government that has, you know, a full sanitation department and a full you know, roads crew and a, you know, people doing all kinds of different jobs. We're a fairly small government particularly outside of policing. So I just want to make the point. Are we okay with this for consent? Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, next up is Rachel. Okay.
Good evening. So first item on my, my docket here, um, is to complete our, um, parks and recreation identification sign package. These are the big green signs that you see outside of our parks. Um, we've tried for some time to get the, um, original vendor Hilton displays, um, to continue the package. We've been unsuccessful. So we had to, um, put it back out and, and try to reach other vendors. Um, Sinorama Roswell is, is the low bid for this project. Um, and this would um, give us eight signs. So the big monument sign at Brook Run Park, um, Donaldson Banister Farm, Wildcat Park, Homecoming Park, and then some little pedestal signs at, at Waterford and, um, and Donaldson Banister for parking. Um, so we, we asked that you, um, hand the reward for Sinorama Roswell and we can get our signs finished.
Anybody have questions? John?
I just want to make sure that I have the count right.
Yeah.
Um, Barclay, what's at Barclay? Is this in the package or is there something already there?
No, there's something already there. So it's eight total.
Eight total. And what about, uh, peeler for Brook Run?
It's already one there.
Yeah.
It's already on there. Okay. So we're talking specific, eight specific signs
Yeah.
that are missing from the previous package.
Correct.
All right. I'm good. Thank you.
Yeah. Go ahead. Anybody else? Tom, sorry.
Um, yeah, I, I just had a question. Um, it, is our pricing based on the number of signs in there or is it independent?
Uh, it is.
Okay, because my, my only reason for asking is we have signs at, uh, Wildcat and Homecoming, um, and, um, we really don't know what's happening at those properties right now and it's forty thousand dollars worth of signs. Um, we haven't made a decision. Those properties might become something else, uh, or if they are redeveloped, the signs might need to come down and, and moved or whatever with the, so I guess the first part, if we proceed as with the plan that's here, would the signs be located in an area that they would be not have to be moved based on the current site, uh, uh, plans for those parks?
Yeah, so they would be, so the, the big green ones with the posters are our temporary signs. They would be, these permanent signs would be in that same spot. That's why we put them there. So they're towards the front of the road. So any construction we would do would, would not be in the way of this.
And that would be like out of the way of any, any sidewalks or trails or parking lots that we'd be putting in and in the, at some point, hopefully in the future. Um, all right, I just, I, I'm
Are we paying? Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Are we paying per sign? Or is this the, there's, because we don't, I don't think I have the contract.
So they have, yeah, so there's a
It was itemized by.
Yeah, it's like, because there's different sign types.
Okay, hold on.
And I guess my question is, is it, is it premature to put signs there when we don't know what's happening at those specific locations yet?
Yeah, and that's because this, yeah, when we, so the design set that, that Sinorama bid on was, was a few years ago. So we yeah, we thought
We were hopeful.
We, we were hopeful, I use your words. Um, but yeah, this, this is a, this is a good question.
Right? So what can we do? Because it's already been out to bid that we don't pay for signs that we maybe don't need or that we're not sure when we'll need them?
Yep, and
What are John Gates, Mayor?
He's here, John's here. And, and Mayor, what we can do, John, as you're coming up, the question is on the, on the two parks that are not constructed yet, you know, if we want to scale back, yeah, you come on up, come on up. Yeah, if you can scale, if we can, you know, if we issue the bid, but can we scale it back?
Yes.
Okay.
Everything, everything is negotiable.
Do you, okay.
But that, that won't interfere with our, the other signs which we, we need and would like to move forward with as quickly as possible. Will this slow down the process, come up the works?
No, yeah. Um, no, it shouldn't. Like, I say, yeah, if we take them out, I'll, I'll send it back to the two, the two companies we, we heard from, they move, they move fast. Um, and we'll, we'll still make sure that Sinorama is the lowest if we, if we do that.
Can I, um, do you, did you say we have, do, we don't have to rebid this? Is that correct?
If, if, okay.
We don't have to rebid. Good. Okay. Thank you.
Um, I have a question about priorities.
Okay.
Wait. Go ahead.
I, Eric, this is kind of a question for you. This original contract was in twenty twenty, it's twenty twenty-four. What? It took four years to figure this out? Like, I don't understand.
Yeah, the, um, I can't explain the delay on the, um, on that particular portion of the sign piece. Yeah, we had our initial package that went out and these were additional ones we were adding. But yes, I mean, we, under, um, under new leadership, we're gonna, we're gonna get this part, this part complete. But on the two, to answer, going back to another question, I hope that answers, that answers your question. I'm trying to avoid your question.
It, it feels like there was a safety net missing.
Right. Agreed. Agreed. And that was, and there are several, just so you know, uh, there are several things that we're that we'll bring forward to y'all that we feel there was something missing on any, on any department. But, uh, Rachel and I did have a conversation earlier today. Some other things that we're going to bring forward in, in short fashion to get the projects complete. On this one though, and just to clarify, because I feel like there's still, from, uh, Mr. Seconder's question, John, the specific question was this, you know, you have a bid on the table for one price. You know, but is there kind of a pick list, I guess, on those other signs? In other words, if we take out two signs, is that still legitimate? It's still a legitimate contract?
Uh, yes. Uh, bottom line, when we contract, it's what Uh, yes, uh, bottom line, when we contract, it's whatever's in the best interest of the city of Dunwood. And that's how we move forward on that.
Okay, and yeah, and on the other part. From Councilwoman Harris, we'll we'll get that. Right to that, that point's well noted.
Can I, can I just intervene on that? John, let's flag that when we, the contract comes through to make sure there's a provision in there for.
Uh, Rob.
You know, maybe I'm presuming um what's gonna happen with the park sites, but if. Putting the signs up will be in a location that would not be impacted by eventual. Future work on the parks. Uh, I don't see a need to pull them out. Why not just go ahead and have nice uniform signs all put up in all the parks and. Even if it is a while before anything, if anything ever happens, we still have those parks. You know, marked and kind of uniformly signed, so that we have kind of a uniform look across the city.
Okay, clearly this isn't going to be consent, but um I am questioned about priority. Because this is really important to me.
Yeah.
Which is, is I think the first sign that has to go up is the Brook Run Leanne Levitan Playground, because.
I agree.
Because it's really a a big deal that it never happened. It's a huge deal that it never happened and I routinely get questions from people who know Leanne. And people are worried we changed the name and I'm like. I used to say, oh, the sign's not up yet, and so to me, everything's important, but that should have been done a while ago.
Yep.
Okay, Tom.
Uh, yeah, sorry, I did have another question. This one's easier, I hope. Um, so I noticed that that the Donny Park sign has a magnet application where Donny Nature Center website is referenced on it. Um, was there consideration to do that at at Donaldson Banister, perhaps Donwood Preservation Trust or w- what, I guess. Was that a request to the Donny Nature Center or was that just something that we saw and said, hey, let's do that and that we reached out to DPT to see if. That, or is that something that we even want to do? Because I know there is information about that property and events. On their site that might be useful to the public, but it might also not be an issue because they can get all that on the website anyway, so.
Yeah.
Was that a conversation?
It was, and and yes, the nature center requested that. Um, we we could, before we go in manufacturing, we'll revisit with DPT because it is under new leadership.
And is that something that has to be fabricated in advance to apply the the magnetic part? Okay.
Anybody else? Just bring it back in two weeks and maybe we can have some ro- more robust discussion about where we're headed.
Okay, no changes. Want to leave them all?
Leave them all, I think, and let us hash it out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, Rachel, I think you're next again.
It's me again, yes. Um, so this one is for um maintenance and repairs um for the window and exterior work at the North Shalford Annex. Um, we have some leaking um on those block windows. Those are those curved windows on the exterior that's coming inside the building. Um, and again, for this one, the low bid was Southern Preservation Systems. Um, so just requesting that we're able to move forward with these uh maintenance and repairs, and this will come out of our SPOST um. Fund for facilities and and parks, so it's already been allocated for this.
Is this current SPOST dollars or former SPOST dollars?
Current.
Current, yeah, okay. SPOST one or two, no, I'm kidding.
One.
It doesn't matter, but I'm, okay, I was just curious, okay. Uh, go ahead.
Um. So in the bid document, there were some really design, like engineering design. So we didn't do that, right? Like, did?
No, we hired an engineer for that.
Okay, so so that's what his finding was, is that it needs all of this.
Correct.
Okay, so then kind of goes to the question we always ask. Um, a hundred and forty thousand dollars and half a million dollars. That's a big difference. So how confident are we that the hundred and forty dollar, a hundred and forty thousand dollar one is going to? Do the same as the five?
So that's why we added, Eric, I'm going to do detail, but that's why we added that one-year parts and labor warranty. Um, was because there was such a big discrepancy between those two.
Right, and um and the director's correct, and one thing we looked at on that in in great detail. I've I've been all over that building. To try to help, you know, try to figure out what was going on over there with the leakage. We put a new roof on the building, but the building when it was built under initial design was a little bit deficient. In terms of the way the construction methods were done. Um, if you remember Eric Johnson with CPS, they looked at it in great length. Nova also looked at it at great length. All those studies were looked at by the current bidder. And we felt like with the one-year warranty, because I and I insisted on that, I said, if it's good for a year. I mean, it'll stay, it'll be fine. The problem that we've had, we've spent some money over there, we've done some other. Um, what I call tricks to try to stop the leakage. The block, I think when it was originally built, that um glass block probably was was not the exact intent. For that type of work on that curved face.
Yeah.
Um, but I will say this, it, uh, the building is a huge asset to the community, as y'all know. We use the community room quite often. And we felt like the prices, yes, there's a huge variance between the two, but the low bid would guarantee everything that we asked them to do. Um, if you remember also, um, the same vendor who did the renovations here at City Hall renovated that building initially to get it move-in ready. We tried to, I'll um be very thrifty on how we were spending money at the time, and then we also redid, if you remember the front door. The glass facade around that, and that became leak-proof. Similar fashion, we did that. And and it guaranteed the work and that's done very well, but the stairwell leaks, it also leaks a little bit within the police. Area, again, where that block is, but we feel we've pinpointed it to the block and also along the parapet wall at the top. There wasn't adequate waterproofing when the building was built, whatever year, forty or fifty years ago, when that building was constructed. So we feel confident and Mr. Gates, I don't know if you have anything additional, but I know that he's gone through that and will uh make sure that that is waterproof.
John.
Are there any uh concerns? Have we dealt with this contractor before?
Um, I don't believe so. I think this is new, new business for us, yeah.
Okay, um. A resident sent me an email regarding some concerns of this construction company, that it's a foreign company. And that they couldn't find it on the Secretary of State. I sent it to your city email address. And all I ask is that you do your due diligence on this uh vendor and make sure that it meets the requirements of contracting.
Right, yeah, yeah, we'll do.
Thank you.
We will do all of the legal due diligence before we move forward with the actual contract. Working with the city attorney's office, we make sure that everything is uh up to par. And we all know who the legal entity is that, you know, that we're doing business with by checking with RRS and et cetera, to making sure that we know who we're dealing with.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Uh, Tom.
Um, yeah, I I I shared the concerns that were raised by uh Stacy, uh, you know, as far as the difference, because. I'm with my memory now, I tried to look back, but I couldn't find, when we actually did the initial renovation, I remember there was additional comebacks for the glass block. And there was additional expense to to make that watertight and fix it and get it right and what, it was five years, maybe? I don't even know if it was that. Um, and it's already. Failing, so I just want to make sure, so obviously taking out the glass block is coming out, if I was reading the plans, is is it everywhere? There's one spot underneath. An overhang that wasn't like blocked out in red, like the areas where it was coming out was in red and what. There, and I just don't know if I was reading the plan wrong, is all of the glass block in the building coming out?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Rounded, yeah.
Okay, because there was a spot that was, it was on the overhang and it and it might have just not been read because. I I don't know, I just want to make sure that all the blocks go in because I don't want to have to deal with this in another couple. And I'm sure you don't either, thank you.
Thanks. Um, I have a couple of questions. When we, I assume, paid an engineer to do this plan, was, so we're. We have the plan, like, get rid of all the glass block, but was part of the instruction to come up with the most afford, like, what are they replacing the glass block with? Um, we'll replace with steel studs. And black veneer to match, so there won't be windows anymore or there will be?
There will, they call them um almost like storefront windows is the technology they use.
Okay. Um. All right, yeah, because. All right, so this was, the engineer, part of what they did was look at the most affordable way to fix this, right?
He looked at the, right, so how to prevent any water from coming in, yep.
Okay, all right, but the wall is still gonna curve or not necessarily, okay, all right. All right, that's it. So this will not be on consent. We'll um see it again in two weeks, but thank you, Rachel.
Thanks.
Oh, I have one other question, Mr. Gates. It's probably for you. So many years ago, when I noticed the difference in the sidewalk bid all those years ago and the bid, the person that won the bid actually ended up. Being unable to perform the work and we collected on some kind of bond or something. Does that sound familiar to anybody besides me?
Performance bond.
Performance bond. Is there a performance bond in this case or no? Because I thought I read something about there not being a bond. But I get, go ahead.
There's not a bond in this case.
Okay, because it's not, okay. But they're, but.
But Eric, you said there was a one-year guarantee.
There's a warranty on the work, but if if they, before they start, if they declare they really can't do it for this price. Then we just, we just have to start over, I guess, or something, or go to, I don't even know what happens in that case. It's just that this discrepancy is humongous. I mean, for the people that cannot see it, the highest bidder was five hundred thousand dollars, I think, right?
Yes.
And so it's kind of all over the place, but he's lower than even the next lower bid. They're lower, so. Um, but this is considered a public works project, right? So you really have to take parks.
It's, do we have to hit the lowest bid on this, John?
Yes.
We have, we have to hit the lowest.
Parks is considered public works.
The lowest.
Right, but we don't have any reason to disqualify this.
At this stage, we don't have any reason to disqualify.
Okay. We shall say thank you. All right, Ginger, you are up next for approve, discussion of approval and agreement for managed networking service provider.
Yes, Mayor and Council, so this request is to enter into an agreement with Seamless Advanced Solutions. We posted an RFP looking for a networking service provider that would be able to. Help us with our network refresh, which is all that equipment that we've previously purchased, to get it all rolled out in the most secure network possible. Um, really segregate and lock down our network and then continued support of the new network once it's up and and running. And after the RFP, we took the submittals, um, did an evaluation, we used some external. Um, people as well to help us go through the evaluations to try to make it as fair as possible. And in the end, Seamless Advanced Solution was the one that came back with the best technical response. The best technical proposal and the most complete and responsive solution for what we were looking for. And um, the request is for two thirty-eight thousand three hundred dollars out of ARP money.
Okay. Anybody have questions, comments, concerns? John?
Ginger, so this is a two-year contract, is that right?
Correct.
And the first year, there's an initial startup charge of a hundred and eighty-three thousand, after that it's fifty-five thousand a year.
Correct, and it can be repeated.
Okay, that's kind of where I'm going.
Mm-hmm.
So on year three, is it gonna be fifty-five, let's call it sixty with a little, you know, bump? Uh, or are there, are we gonna do another startup of a hundred and eighty-three thousand again? When, when do we, we're doing a hundred and eighty-three thousand to start this?
So the the hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars is actually to complete our network refresh, which is a big ticket item. So there is a lot of labor and a lot of work that that's going to go into that. They're gonna do a complete evaluation. Of our current situation. They're gonna put together a complete project plan that goes through the best, most complete way to move us from point A to point B. And then they're gonna actually do the project exactly, so all of that is what's covered in that one hundred and eighty-three thousand three hundred dollars. The fifty-five thousand dollars is just your regular recurring, you know, annual costs to have um the network service provider. But that's not even necessarily gonna be the, you know, it's it's an hourly rate still, so we're paying for what we use. And so if we only end up using them for an hour or two, then we would only pay for an hour or two of that versus the fifty-five thousand dollars.
All right, thank you.
Um, Ginger, just hats off, uh, really detailed work, uh, super, super detailed from the RFP. From the low-level requirements, you know, you know what it is, right? If you don't, if you don't ask for it, you're not gonna get it.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, so I just want to say thank you, hats off for the due diligence, and I'm I'm looking forward to taking it up to another level and get another notch on our belt. Thank you.
I'm curious, did our current network service provider bid?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else have questions? Is this okay for consent? Thank you, thank you, Ginger. And. Public comment? I have no cards. Lou and Susan are still here. Can't see if anybody's over there. Um, uh, city manager comments?
No additional comments.
Council comments? None. Okay.
Uh, parents, please, uh, feel free to give your child a measles bump and rubella immunization. We've got a. Pandemic going on in the U.S., people traveling outside of states, and we've seen the highest rates of uh measles infections in children now that we've not seen in decades.
We don't have a need for executive session, correct? No executive session.
No executive.
Um, I need a motion to adjourn. So Cath, uh, Councilman Lotenbach removed, second by Rob, uh, oh, Tom, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good meeting.